It is. It is four o'clock. Actually, it's four oh one. I will call the meeting to order. I'll ask for the roll call, please.
Mayor Sue Patterson.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Warren Dickert.
Present.
Councillor Harold Fleet.
Present.
Councillor David Hawking sends his regrets. Councillor Carol Hudson.
Present.
Councillor Brandon Cable. Is not online yet. Councillor Susan Sackel.
Present. Thank you. I'll begin with the land acknowledgement. As we work together, as we work toward reconciliation with indigenous people, we begin our meeting today by respectfully acknowledging that we are situated on the traditional territory of the Anishinaabe Nation, the people of three fires known as Ojibwe, Odaawa, and Potawatomi nations. And further, give thanks to the Chipwas of Sogin and the Chipwas of Nawash, now known as the Sogin-Ojibwe Nation, as the traditional keepers of this land. So, welcome to our Committee of the Whole Meeting for Monday, April seventh, two thousand and twenty-five. Good afternoon, council, staff, guests, the viewing public, and the media. Council, does anyone have a disclosure of pecuniary interest or a conflict of interest? Seeing none, as always, if one should arise during the meeting, you can declare it then. We do not have any additions or deletions on our agenda, so we'll move right into our health and safety message. Our message demonstrates the town's commitment to safety, to staff, and our residents. It is intended to raise awareness of potential risks, promote safe practices, and help prevent injuries, illnesses, and fatalities. So it is my turn to present the health and safety message this afternoon, and it is how to be flood smart. Canada's most common natural hazard is flood. There are three steps that will help you during an emergency, such as flood, before, during, and after. Before the emergency, you should build an emergency kit. The kit should include food, a can opener, personal items, first aid items, a radio, house and car keys, emergency plans and numbers, cash, flashlight, batteries, and two litres of water per day per person. Sign up for weather service alerts and talk to your family about flooding and prepare an evacuation plan. During the emergency, be alert and monitor local weather warnings. Avoid contact with floodwaters and follow instructions from emergency officials. And after, do not return home until it is safe. Be cautious when re-entering your home and always wash after contact with floodwaters. Item six, we do not have any delegations. And item seven, we do have a notice of motion from Deputy Mayor Dickert. And Deputy Mayor, I'll let you read that, and then I'm going to ask you to move it and then ask for a seconder.
Thank you, Your Worship. The, whereas council has a need and desire to be aware of our residents' concerns and compliments, and whereas there is a move towards increased electronic reporting and the use of the town's citizen request and suggestion portal, and this use is expected to grow, and whereas the citizen request and suggestion data will be recorded and tracked electronically by staff, and whereas communication is a key component of open and responsible government, and whereas the town's strategic goal number five is for open and responsible government, therefore be it resolved at the council of the town of Hanover, direct staff to prepare a report with respect to the creation and implementation of a citizen request and suggestion report for council's consideration. And I would make that motion.
Thank you. Is there a seconder? Councillor Sackel. Any discussion? I think we'll see the discussion when the report comes back. Okay, all in favor? That is carried. Item eight is staff reports. Eight point one is report DCS zero four twenty-five. The subject is the asset management plan levels of service. It's from Chris Walker, our Director of Corporate Services and Treasurer. And I need a mover and seconder before Chris presents the report. Deputy Mayor Dickert and Councillor Hudson. Chris?
Thank you, Worship. Council, may remember during the February twenty-eighth Finance Committee meeting, Sudei from Watson and Associates provided some background documentation regarding the proposed level of service for our asset management plan. And during this presentation, there was information provided regarding the current gap in funding for our assets, as well as a couple of scenarios for levels of service, and the impact to the future costing that would be required to fully fund the town assets. It was noted at the meeting that the water and wastewater assets, or our user fees, as we call them, do not have any infrastructure gap at this time, however, require approximately five point four one percent increase annually to keep pace with estimated inflation in capital and net operating expenditures. To elaborate on that more, that was based on four point six two percent inflation just for capital and two point two percent for operations based on the information provided by Watson and Associates. That's where we came up with the five point four one percent overall. As for the tax-funded assets, that includes the roads, sidewalks, buildings, anything that's not from water, wastewater, or user fees. This came to light that there was a two point eight six million dollar funding gap associated with all these assets. During that February meeting, it was estimated the annual tax levy increase would be required of a seven point five nine percent, which would result in a tax impact rate of six point three eight percent. So that worked out to about a hundred and fifty-eight dollars a year for every assessment at the two twenty, two hundred and twenty thousand, which is our average assessment. But I like to break it down to a hundred thousand because not everybody's at two twenty. They could be three hundred, four hundred, two hundred, one hundred. So I've broken it down. At one hundred thousand assessment, it would be equal to seventy-one dollars and eighty-two cents a year. That was based on the information provided back in February. There were several alternative scenarios provided for the roads, and that one was a baseline level of service, which required three rounds of mill and overlay every twenty years with full construction in eighty years. And the alternative service level number one was a reduction of about five hundred thousand a year. However, it only provided two rounds of micro-surfacing and one round of mill and overlay, and was only for sixty years construction, which doesn't really align with our water, wastewater, storm, or our road space, which is usually eighty years. Both of these scenarios included our current low-class bitmuss, or LCB, to the high-class bitmuss, HCB, surface at the time of reconstruction. That meant that anything that didn't have a curb gutter that was being reconstructed, that is currently in the LCB, would be switched to the HCB at all times to curb and gutter with sidewalks, et cetera, and store. The facilities had a baseline service level of one point seven six million annually, but it did not address our current limitations resulting in fifty-six hundred square feet of additional space. That is mostly for our public works area. If you look over at our area on Fourteenth First Street area, they are short at least a full bay and a fair bit more of storage space as well in that area. And the other alternative service levels would be to increase additional services for twenty-two thousand four hundred square feet of additional space, which we didn't really feel was necessary, but that was given as an alternative for council. Both scenarios ensured timely rehabilitation and replacement of the facility components. In the table one, there's a summary of these levels of service, which was the six point three eight percent increase. Again, these are tax impacts, not the levy tax impacts. And if you did the roads one alternative, and then the roads alternative, as well as facilities alternatives, and the different levels of increases. During that meeting, we inquired about the funding gap and extending it from the ten-year to a maximum of twenty years to see if that tax rate of six point three eight could be reduced significantly. Council also wanted more information regarding these scenarios and the impact of extending the funding gap beyond the ten-year frame. After the meeting, the following table two shows the impact if we increased the six point three eight from a ten-year scenario to a twenty-year scenario, which would allow it to go down to a four point seven one percent. Not as low as we had hoped. As you know, compounding and everything else adds into that, and at the end of the twenty years, you still have a thirty percent gap in your funding. So you haven't, you've only involved about seventy percent of that savings on that. The table three that's showing you there is taking that six point three eight down to four point seven one and showing you the impact. As you can see, for every hundred thousand, that difference by extending it ten years is a difference of five cents a day. Not a lot of savings to have an impact at the end of the ten-year gap to still have thirty percent outstanding. So we talked with Watson and Associates, and the internal benchmarking of our current AMP projects showed that relative to the average pavement condition index, or PCI, as it's called, that the town was rather high compared to everybody else. Normally, the internal benchmarking showed that there was an annual investment of between thirty-five to forty thousand per kilometer, and we were at fifty-one thousand. So they looked into that further and found that we had wider roads and our construction costs covered a bigger area. So they switched it to a per-square-meter basis, which was more reasonable, and reduced our construction costs significantly from the fifty-one thousand per kilometer down to twenty-nine thousand, a big savings of twenty-two thousand, which made a huge impact of almost a million dollars on the annual requirement. We also reviewed the backlog assets because we were trying to figure out why there was so much backlog of six million dollars in there. And we refined the data. As some of the assets are not being replaced, they were disposed of, and we're not replacing them, but they showed up again when they were looking at the information. Instead of them ignoring any disposed, they added that in. That was almost two point eight million dollars worth right there. And we also had some assets that were on their listing that we're already doing in two thousand and twenty-five, which is the fire truck, which we have already started last year. And there were also other assets that aren't the responsibility of the town and should not be included in part of this asset management plan, and that would be landfill and library because they have their own separate assets to worry about. So there was a reduction of almost three point seven million dollars of that six million dollar backlog assets, and that reduced the annual amount by three hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars a year just on those assets. So we have attached an updated AMP analysis that was provided by Watson and Associates for review with the above-noted refinements and changes put in place. It shows that the town requires four point nine six million annually, not the previous six point three eight, which is a reduction of almost one point four two million annually. This reduces our funding gap down to one point four four million from the two point eight six. So that basically reduces it down from the to five point seven two percent on the levy or four point five three percent. So the levy is now down one point eight seven percent and the tax rate one point eight five percent. So almost a two percent savings just in that alone. So on that scenario, you will notice that there are three scenarios for roads provided. There's the baseline levels of service and the alternative one levels of service. Both of these are the scenarios that were similar to the original information provided in February, albeit there's now lower rates on an annual basis per year. And the second alternative level of service was provided with a higher level of PCI pavement condition information. I thought it would be easier if we actually went to the information that Watson and Associates gave it to us. So I'll be moving you back and forth, but I'll tell you which page to go to, okay? So if we could go to page seventeen of the whole package, which is actually page five of the Watson Associates, so page seventeen. So if you're on your iPad, just go on the bottom, and there's a ruler on the bottom, and you can slide to page seventeen. And what you'll see is the baseline scenario that they're showing there that we're talking about. Is everybody at page seventeen? So what you'll see is that there's three mill and overlays occurring. On the bottom left is the condition state, so you've got it from green all the way down to really red. So if it can stay in the yellow and the greens, it means you're in fair to good to very good all the time. Anything in orange and below means you're starting to be poor, very poor, and you're failing on that, okay? To the right is a life cycle activity, what's going to happen. So within this scenario, over an eighty-year period, you're looking at three mill and overlays and one reconstruction. If you go to the previous page on page sixteen, it actually shows you the breakdown of how much it costs for every time we do a micro-surfacing for the whole town, how much it costs for the mill and overlay, and how much reconstruction is taken into place. So they'll also show you that over the eighty years, it will cost a hundred and four million, thirty-four thousand dollars for your whole road. Works out to an annual funding target of one point three million, or every kilometer is about twenty-nine thousand dollars. So you can see how the every time we do a mill and overlay around the twenty-year, around the forty-year, and around the sixty-year, it moves up into the fair to good area. So sixty-five percent of the time in this scenario, you're always in fair to good and very good. Thirty-five percent of the time, however, you're starting to be in the poor, very poor, but you're not in the fail at all. The next scenario is alternative scenario one, same situations. However, you're doing two micro-surfacing, one mill and overlay, and one reconstruction. Downside to this is sixty years, and all our other stuff is eighty years, so it doesn't make sense that you would try and do it over sixty years. What are you going to do for the last twenty? Just let it sit and hope it stays there for you till you're ready to do your water sewer, because you would not rip up a road in sixty years just to put the water and sewer in at that time if it wasn't ready to go at that point. It reduces the cost annually, but it will be a larger cost in the end because you're redoing it every sixty years, and you will notice that fifty-five percent of the time, your roads are in poor or very poor condition. And you're actually, I think, in a failed position ten percent of the time. That's how you read these screens. Does anyone have any questions on that? Through you, Worship.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. I was, the Good Roads Conference, I was just at, there was actually a session I went and sat in, and it was about pavement restoration and all those things. And they're saying that Ontario right now, as a whole, not just Hanover, but Ontario, is not using the most advanced technologies that are available that some of the western provinces are using. So when they did this study, was there any consideration given to technological advances that might, you know, like maybe a mill and overlay would actually last thirty years instead of twenty years type of thing? Just wondering what what was done in that respect, and also even the infrastructure, like the water and wastewater technology changes in that respect as well. You know, like there's trenchless projects that are doing pipe bursting and relining and all those types of things. So was there any discussion around that? Did they consider that when they put these numbers together?
Through you, Worship. There was discussion with Ron and Sudei, as well as others from Watson and Associates regarding that. And it was questioned to Ron, what is it you currently do to your roads? What do you plan to do? At one time, our previous AMP had that we would do crack sealing. Well, we never do crack sealing. We have never done that. And Ron basically said, this is the direction that we would do, and this is how we would move forward. Their concern was that you couldn't do a mill and overlay three times or four times in a row before the road had to be totally replaced. Ron assured them that it could be done that way. I don't know of the other information. All I know is that ours is eighty years. A lot of people have sixty to seventy-year life cycles. We have extended our life cycle because of the products that we're using to put in the ground. I defer to Ron if he had more information regarding that, because I'm not privy to the Good Roads, what happened there.
I would say the information's provided is more in terms of technologies that are currently out there, options in terms of it. I know when we run to one of these scenarios of doing the additional micro-surfacing on the roads, it's quite a bit less expensive, but in terms of bringing the road back further, if it's an asphalt-surfaced road, doesn't have near the impact of going to the mill and overlay. So the scenario number two increased it by quite a bit, but then we're doing a number of much more treatments than what we would have been projected out of the baseline. I think the big target on that is to do what we need to do to get the road so that it can go through this eight-year life expectancy that falls in line with some of the underground infrastructure to take overall life, underground infrastructure, and roads lasting that same eight-year lifespan.
So, you know, some of the things they talked about is when they're doing the mill and overlay, there's technologies now where they add fiberglass or other fiber to the product they're putting on there, which extends the life of that. So, again.
I would say, no, they did not take that additional information into account because the information they're using is from page sixteen, based on our two thousand and twenty-four information for all our construction, micro-surfacing, and mill and overlay that we have done in the past. So I'd say, no, it does not include that fiberglassing that you're talking about.
So I guess the alternate level of service one, which does two of them, you know, as technology advances, maybe that would give us the eighty years. If, like I said, if technology advances in that respect, and you know, they're working on it all the time, and when you look at the projects that they're taking on, when they're considering climate change and increased storms and all of that, the products they're using are more robust, so I would, I guess I'm kind of hoping that maybe we could go with that level of service alternate one with two overlays, and we might still get our eighty years out of it.
If it's any consolation right now, pretty well, once we do a paving, we never do anything to it again until forty years is up. So right now, that's what we're doing. So we're in the very poor and very poor area. So our baseline that we're showing right now, we actually don't even achieve that at this point in time. This is what we should be doing at this point in time, but we aren't. And the costing that you're talking about would probably be a lot more than what we're showing on this. And this AMP, remember, it's a shot in time. Every five years, you're supposed to review it anyway, so when the new technology is available and the prices are available, I would see that being updated at that point, but currently, it's based on what we know and are aware of at this point in time, and that we know that we could possibly do and have done in the past. Like I said, they used to put crack sealing on there. We have never done that, so it was like, remove that, because we don't even do it, so why even put it in our level of service?
And the bulk of the roads that we're rebuilding are the tar and ship, they're not even the I forget the acronym, but the asphalt curb to curb and gutter type roads that were, yes, HCB, yes. Okay, thank you. I just, you know, I think it's worth discussing whether that was.
It was not put in on any of these scenarios, because again, it's based on what we know and have the information available for.
And this, as you said, would be revisited in five years.
Every five years, you're supposed to visit your asset management plan. Correct.
Thank you.
So if we can go to page nineteen, which will be the alternative scenario two that Ron had alluded to. This is the one where we would be doing micro-surfacing, mill and overlay, micro-surfacing, mill and overlay. We're doing four micro-surfacing. Micro-surfacing is basically just skimming the top of it and getting rid of the imperfections, if I'm saying that correctly. Mill and overlay, you're actually digging down about an inch to three inches at the most and putting in new pavement. That's the difference. So you'll see on the right side of that life cycle activity where they're showing you have four micro-surfs, mill and overlay of three, and you have a full reconstruction in year eighty, you will notice that ninety-nine percent of the time, it's in fair, good, or very good position at all times. The only year that it does not have a good or fair rating is in year seventy-nine, the year before you have to replace it. So that's a fairly good way to be. That's a high PCI of seventy-seven. I think most try to be around the seventy-five, seventy to seventy-five area, if they can be, PCIs. But that's assuming you're doing that every single time. So that amount is one point four one nine annually, so it averages about thirty-two thousand a kilometer more. We have about forty-five kilometers in town that we do. So you're talking about three thousand dollars more from baseline to have a higher PCI. So that's why these alternatives were provided for you. So now if we can return to the report on page nine of the package. Sorry to bounce you all around, but it's easier if you actually see this stuff as we're talking. So those were the three different scenarios just for the roads. And again, all these scenarios included that our low-class bitmuss, LCB, or surface-treated roads without curb gutter, et cetera, are being replaced with high class bitmuss surface at the time of reconstruction. So every time right now, we're doing a slurry seal or seal on those roads that are really wide, and until they get done, they will be switched to an HCB at the time the reconstruction occurs. So from these three scenarios, council needs to decide which level of service for roads is best for the town to use, as this will determine our long-term financial plan scenarios. We have the baseline level of service, alternative level service one, which I highly recommend you do not do because it's a sixty-year, and it does not really match with the rest of it. Alternative level of service two, or if you want something else in between, something between baseline and the alternative, then we'll get them to work on something else, but at least we have a direction from council what they want to see. And that would be based on what pavement condition do you want to see, and how often do you want to be in the poor, very poor, failed state of your roads. Moving on to the facilities, our facilities levels of service, we need council to decide if the current proposed level of service under the baseline, which includes our minimal limited storage space increase of fifty-six hundred square feet, is satisfactory. Remember that annual funding was reduced by over three hundred and eighty-nine thousand with the change in our backlog that we talked about. And there could be a savings of twenty-nine thousand a year if you don't want us to increase that fifty-six hundred square feet. That increase storage is based on our approximately hundred and twenty thousand square feet between recreation and public works. Hundred and ten thousand is recreation and ten thousand is public works. And additionally, the storage is mostly for our public works, as the current area over in that area that I mentioned is not sufficient to house all of their equipment. So on page twenty of the attached analysis, or it was page thirty-two, the tax rate impact of the new baseline level of service is approximately four point five three percent tax rate, which is down one point eight five from the original amount provided in February. So the impact on those level of service decisions on the repair are as follows in the table four. You may recall back in February, it was approximately a hundred and fifty-eight dollars for every two hundred and twenty thousand assessment, or seventy-one dollars and eighty-two cents for every hundred thousand. So you're seeing a reduction of forty-five dollars and eighty cents on the higher end to twenty dollars and eighty-two cents for every hundred thousand, just in the change from what we had talked about in February to now with the baselines, is all we were talking about. So the table four now is showing you the new information that we've provided. So baseline is the four point five three percent. The higher amount would be if you decided you wanted alternative level two for your roads. There's a bit higher PCI, higher costs associated with that, about a hundred and twenty-five thousand more a year. So as you can see, the difference is about three point six cents a day on every two hundred and twenty thousand, or almost one point six cents a day for every hundred thousand if you change from your baseline to your alternative roads to the highest end. Or from the lowest end to the highest end. Sorry, I misspoke on that one, okay? From the highest end of four point five three down to four point one one. Sorry, I'm losing my voice here. So that's just giving you a snapshot of what it would cost based on if we left everything at baseline levels of service. Again, in February, it said it was one fifty-eight for every two hundred and twenty thousand assessment. We're saying would be a hundred and twelve twenty. If you wanted the higher level of alternative road level of service, you would be paying another three dollars approximately a year for that, okay? That's on two hundred and twenty thousand assessment. Would you prefer I just talk a hundred thousand? Would that be easier than switching back and forth? Doesn't matter to you? Okay. So the financial implications with the review of the roads and the backlog assets, providing a positive in savings reductions to the original asset management plan provided in February, we highly recommend the funding gap be completed over the ten-year period and not be expanded over fifteen to twenty years. As we noted before, it's not a big difference in pricing and still having a deficit of a gap in funding after the twenty years of thirty percent. As we can see on page twenty-three of the Watson and Associates, and that's on page thirty-five, continually to defer for future years increases the amount of debt repayments over the years. Our current debt management policy indicates that we don't want to be over the ten percent mark. Well, this is already putting us towards the fifteen percent mark. Annual debt repayments also include our water and wastewater. As we know, we have approximately forty-five to sixty million dollars over the next five to ten years. It's going to have to be borrowed for these facilities, so they need to be part of our. So they need to be part of our borrowing capacity of our annual repayment limit. The decisions for the levels of service will determine again our long-term financial plan for the AMP. As noted under the discussion area, the impact will be a minimum of four point five three percent annually to fund the tax portion. This is the impact again of a hundred and twelve twenty for every two twenty assessment or fifty one dollars for every hundred thousand assessment. This is an annual, annual increase. Not one year, annually, you're going to do this for ten years straight. You're at least increasing fifty one dollars for every hundred thousand assessment for an asset management plan. At the end of the ten years, then it would be inflation only. To extend the funding gap up to twenty years, it's shown on page thirty four in this um documents area. You would save approximately six point nine cents a day on two hundred and twenty thousand assessment or three cents a day. That's not worth it to have again an outstanding amount due in year twenty of your funding gap. Table four on the previous page shows the tax dollar impact. Table five here below shows the impact that four point five three percent would be if it extended over a further ten years to drop it down to three point five one percent a year, you would save one point zero two percent savings. Or again, three cents a day or eleven dollars and forty eight cents a year for every hundred thousand. So you have to weigh out what works best for you on that. So I'd like to know if we could go to page thirty one of this package, so we can look at the levels of service that council needs to make the decisions on. So again, if we can just go to page thirty one. You will see the levels of service, the alternative scenario number one for roads reduces your annual target by a hundred and forty four thousand. This is the one that would be sixty years versus eighty years, and we don't think it's a viable option in our opinion as staff. Alternative scenario number two for roads. It's expected to maintain the average PC pavement condition index above a seventy five rating. But increases your annual funding target by a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. The higher PCA PCI than baseline and minimal one percent per year, one percent would be in poor in year seventy nine. Ninety nine percent of the time, that scenario would be all in fair, good or very good condition. The third one is for our levels of ser- services for current storage space. Now, five percent is increased to our storage bases mostly for the public works area as the current space is not sufficient for storage of equipment and vehicles and require a minimum one more bay. As I mentioned before, we currently have a hundred and twenty thousand square feet of indoor spaces between public works and recreation for storage and spaces. And a minimum five percent is required at this point in time was identified by staff. The next one to reduce recreation facility space by twenty five percent is an option. I don't even know why it was brought forward because the reduction of twenty five percent on a hundred and ten thousand of our indoor recreation space equals approximately twenty seven thousand five hundred square feet. Of that hundred and ten thousand indoor square feet is ninety five thousand is P and H center. I don't see a reduction happening at P and H center. Which leaves us fifteen thousand for our pavilions outside and our washrooms. Those are our indoor recreation spaces that we have available. So when I talked to them, I said, why is this option even there? And it was just so that you would see how much savings you could have if you reduce something. I said, well, you're not going to reduce the P and H center down because it's there. So you're not going to switch that. So I don't even see that being an option. So I didn't really stress a lot of time and effort on that one for you. Take a look at. Okay, I'm not sure if you wanted to go to page thirty four. This is the one where the tax rate mitigation, where it goes from the four point five three down to the three point five one. And the funding gap at the end of the year is at the end of twenty forty five, which is after the twenty year period, would be twenty point four six percent still outstanding that you have to do. So you know how every year we're saying you have to increase this every year for the next ten years? After ten years, you wouldn't have to increase anymore. It would just be basically your inflation and anything new that you'd be, so that would be growth related, not existing assets. If you keep extending everything by twenty five, fifteen, ten years, whatever you want to do, you're going to continue to keep pushing that gap further and further and further, and you're still going to do that, which means you have to borrow more and more to get to that point, and now you've reached your max of borrowing capacity, which is on page thirty five. Where you will see if we do all our stuff as we're supposed to do over a ten year period, the blue that's in there on those charts shows that we're about twelve to fourteen percent there. If we continue to extend the debt repayment longer, it's going to take us up to the sixteen to eighteen percent by twenty ten thirty five, depending on which rate you go with. Three point five one is the one that would take it to the lowest that would save you a little bit of money there. So if we could go back now to page eleven of the report. We're going to say that the link to the strategic plan is safe and reliable infrastructure and open and responsible government. So our report is that this asset management plan levels of service be received and that council provide direction with respect to the proposed levels of service to be included in the revised AMP. Again, we need to know basically on the roads, what level of service you would feel comfortable with and on the facilities that you'd be feel comfortable with. Again, all this stuff will be brought back to you, but we have to give this information to Watson and Associates so that they can get this information for our asset management plan. Oh, sorry, I guess I I forgot. My my apologies. The mayor had sent a note asking that um I look at our twenty twenty six budget assumptions to date that we know of, that are going to increase whether we do anything or not to it. So uh at this point in time, we have about six point eight nine percent levy increase that's going to happen. And that is assuming policing costs are going to go up two hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars because you're adding a new officer, plus they also have wages and benefits that has been agreed upon. I'm also assuming two percent on wages benefits, two percent on utilities, and again, a nine percent on insurance, that equals about one point eight nine percent increase. And then you will remember the police station, we're adding that. There was another two hundred and sixty two thousand two hundred dollars to be added. So that's where we got the six point eight nine percent. The upside is that police station is also part of our five hundred and sixty thousand six hundred amount that we needed for the four point five three percent. So I could take that off there. So we only need two ninety eight four for our AMP requirements. If we add that with the police station, because remember, we're adding tax dollars in twenty twenty six for that police station that was over and above. And then the following year, we were doing another two hundred and sixty two thousand two hundred. So we're already adding that for at least two years straight that we know of. If you go with alternative number two, you would need another hundred and twenty five thousand dollars on that. So right now, if we were to go with baseline levels of service and just those five items that we know of, policing costs, police station wages, utilities and insurance, we would be at a nine point nine three percent levy increase, which would equal a hundred and eleven dollars and seventy three cents for every hundred thousand or thirty one cents a day. If you wanted alternative two level of service, higher PCI, more information, roads are in better condition. That would be eleven point two one percent, or it would be a hundred and twenty six dollars and eight cents a year. So fourteen dollars and thirty five cents more to have the alternative level two for your roads. Or an additional zero point three nine percent a day. So that works out to thirty five cents a day versus thirty one cents a day on a hundred thousand. Hopefully, that's what you were looking for, kind of. Again, these are just estimates based on the two percent. I can't say it's going to be etched in stone, and I'm assuming the twenty twenty six capital will be based on what we already have been putting away in the past. We'd use one point six million in tax dollars last year, and we're hoping to use that again in twenty twenty six. Plus now this new amount of two sixty two two, plus our amounts for our AMP requirements.
Thank you. Comments? Would you like to ask, I I would like to ask Mr. Cooper, which one do you favor on the roads scenarios?
Looking at it, I know one thing we really should be targeting on is making sure that we can get the roads you know, to that eighty year year target. I've looked back, we um did pavement condition index. We had a study done back in twenty eighteen. On that time, our average PCI was seventy four point seven, call it seventy five. They were in good, good condition. And we had eighty eighty seven percent of our roads were above a PCI of fifty five. If we just stick with the baseline one, we might slide back a little bit on that, but uh we're probably close on that one to get it into the um the alternative, the second alternative, which we looked at. Which was the four rounds of micro-surfacing and three rounds of milling overlay that increased the PCI probably quite a bit significantly. More than that, that got us out uh PCI a fair or better being ninety nine percent with only one percent being poor or worse. I may be not not convinced we need to go go to that level, but probably closer to the baseline. I don't think we want to slip down to the uh sixty year uh expectancy of the roads.
Thank you, Counselor Cable.
Thank you, worship. Um Chris, just wondering, how do we track our progress on this going forward? So if we, is there a certain dollar amount that you're trying to hit at year ten? Is that how we know that we've actually closed the gap?
Based on what Watson and Associates has provided to us, it's five six, five hundred and sixty thousand six hundred right now with an annual inflation on top of that. And there was a a chart provided, and it was provided on, let me get that page for you. On page thirty of this whole package or page eighteen of Watson Associates, it shows that your bill is going up a hundred and twelve dollars, and then it will continue to go up. It will be a hundred and fifteen because there's an addition of two percent and put it, put it in there for inflation over the next ten years. So by the end of twenty thirty five, that tw- two thousand four hundred seventy six dollars has now gone up to three thousand eight hundred fifty five. Now that's assuming nothing else has changed, right? But we know that that's going to change over years. You know that utilities go up. We know insurance goes up. We know wages go up. We know everything goes up. But that's just a a shot in time at as of as of twenty twenty four, you paid two thousand four hundred seventy six dollars, sorry, twenty twenty five, you're paying two thousand four hundred seventy six dollars. It's going to go up to three thousand eight hundred and fifty five dollars by twenty thirty five, just with the asset management plan alone.
Yes, I think that's my worry, right? It's just us being able to really differentiate between the asset management plan and capital versus operations, because in their chart on that page, it seems like the operational costs are fairly linear and they're not growing at rates of six, eight, nine percent. So it's, I guess, how do we make sure going forward, you're going to retire, somebody else is going to come on, this council leaves, right, that that we actually know what the target is so that we can, we can hit it?
It it will be there in the asset management plan. It will be on our financial, long-term financial plan of the direction that we're going to. What you really want to see is more like a forty five, fifty five percent split between capital and operations. Operations being higher. And you don't want to spend too much more. That that's a a rule of thumb usually they would say. So by the year twenty thirty five, we're almost at that point. We're also adding, don't forget, each year two percent. So that's what we're putting on operations as well on that side. I I know it's hard to see, again, things can change in two years. Look at what's changing with tariffs right now. It's changing everything, right? Like we, we can't predict, but we have to go on what we currently have. We have to do a long-term financial plan for ten years and show the direction we're going there. I I know it probably doesn't give you all the details that you want on that, but there there's more stuff in the background. I don't have all the background information at my fingertips right now that Watson Associates has to get these figures. They've been just working with our existing operations and our capital. Eventually, we'll get that, and then I'll be updating the our software so that we have what our replacement costs are. We know what that information is going to be.
Okay, other comments or questions, Counselor Fleet?
Thank you, worship, and this uh maybe I'll direct towards Ron as over the eighty years, as uh width of the roads become smaller, there's going to, it's going to be a lot less cost to maintain these roads with any type of uh surface. And so as we as the roads become more narrow over the next twenty to thirty years, there'll be less cost to maintain. That's the way I.
I I can answer that. They were looking at what we spent in twenty twenty four. So they were basing it that you would normally do a road this wide, but because we had extra wide roads, they took what our cost was, broke it down. So it doesn't matter what size road you're going to put on there. That's what it's going to cost per per square meter regardless. So we're always going to be going in that direction. They're just saying that, you know, the cost per per linear foot or whatever you want to call it, is not fifty one thousand. It's actually only twenty nine thousand. Because when they took it into account, they assumed that it was only the size road. But we'd spent this much to cover these roads. So that's why it came back to that little smaller amount. So it won't really matter what size you replace in the future. It'll be whatever. If you want to do three times that, then you're going to have to charge it at twenty nine thousand times that.
The other question is, uh, when it comes to facilities, like you, we're talking one bay. And then we're talking recreation. Is there room at the current uh town works property that for another bay? And could there possibly be storage there for parks and rec? At the uh public works yard, there's a town old lands oxy to the south of the current current facility there, which that that could be utilized for for future building.
Thank you, worship, and thank you, Chris, for your, you got a pretty good handle on this. It's a pretty complex. Uh but you know, it's it's, you've done a great job. So thank you. You know, I guess when I look at this and I I I look at the projects, you know, fire hall, police station, I'm concerns me to, I do think we should do it in the ten years. Uh I also would like to consider the alternate one simply because you know, if we're going to look at this every five years, perhaps, you know, we can make an adjustment in five years if we find that we're off target. I I know it's not a big savings, but you know, we have a lot of, lot of impact coming at us. So I say, I myself look at that. I I I still think there is likely some technology advances that are coming that are going to change the needs for for road reconstruction and and resurfacing and that. Um so I I I do lean towards the alternate one. I think on the building side, I I support the baseline. Uh I don't think we can look at, I agree with you as far as cutting any recreational space. Uh I think we do need the the extra storage for the parks or for public works. So I think, you know, baseline on that one. But I I lean to the alternate one simply because of all the other stuff we have on the table right now. And if this is reviewed every five years, I think we maybe have a chance to, if we do need to correct, we have the opportunity to do it then. And um I also think that we should try and do it in the ten years because there's no sense having that big gap at the end. So um those are my comments. Thanks.
So either Chris or Ron, can you speak to the sixty year? That's in alternate one. The sixty year and the eighty year. What's that due to?
Sixty year one. If you look at the alternative scenario, it's on page eighteen of the package. You will notice that nothing gets done till closer to thirty years. At that point, you're already in a very poor state. Then you might do a milling overlay in thirty years. And then it goes right down to uh almost a failed situation. So your PCI for that is only fifty two, which is very low. So you're wanting to reduce your current pavement condition in- index at the, at the current level that Ron had told you that it's at, just to save uh I hate to say it, three thousand dollars for kilometer times forty five. For the, for the sake of a hundred and uh, what's that, thirty eight thousand dollars? That's uh, that's a huge hit, whereas the baseline, at least you got a sixty one and you're never in a failed spot. But you are in a very poor spot for a few items, and most of them are in year seventy two to eighty, so for the last eight years, and you know that that road is getting well-used and you're going to be working on that one. So I I just caution going with the sixty years because you're asking for a reconstruction in sixty years and we're not ready for the. Cause you're asking for a reconstruction in sixty years and we're not ready for the water and wastewater and people will be upset that you're ripping up a road just for the sake of ripping it up. To save this type of money.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. Uh my only concern is, you know, this is all very. Textbook, you know, it's, it's a consultant saying, you know, here's, well, here's the way it looks in a textbook. You know, reality has to play into it as well, and again, I look at, you know, there will be technological changes, there will be a lot of things that happen. Um, you know, I, I listened to a, a report from Waterloo region that, that good roads and thirty to thirty five percent of their roads are in poor condition now. So, you know, they, they're on a pretty big uphill battle themselves, so we're not alone in this and I, I. You know, I look at, most of our roads in town are in pretty decent shape, we got some rough spots, but for the most part, we're, we're in decent shape. And I, I just. I'm reluctant to, and I know it's not a lot of money when you say it, but when you keep adding all these little bits up, it adds up to a, to a significant amount, so. Is it a roll of the dice? I, I don't like to say that, that it is that, but uh. I think, you know, we need to try and save where we can, what we can. Uh cause you went through quite a list of things there that, you know, we have coming at us. Uh sewage treatment plant, hey, police and fire, all of those things, so um I, I. I said, the consultants have. A very good textbook look at things and if everything plays out the way they say it's gonna play out, yeah, it's likely pretty accurate, but. We all know in reality, you know, you get a, a bad winter and it's harder on your roads, you get some good winters and it's not as hard on your roads, so. Uh in the end, like I said, I, I think I need to save what we can. I think we need to put the app, asset management place, plan in place. And we need to do that in the ten years because I think it is that important, but I, I still support. The alternate scenario one, so, thanks.
Counselor Hudson.
Thank you, worship, and a lot, a great deal of effort has gone into this. I think we have to be a little bit cognizant about a lot of, as Deputy Mayor said, a lot of the things that we've got going on. And the fact that things are changing considerably out in the world for people and um. We need to be cautious about how much additional, I know we talk cents a day, but that's just taxes. There's a lot of other things that they're gonna have, these, our community members are gonna have coming on board as well. So I think in order to prioritize. Uh with some of the things that we have coming up, I'm, you know, I'm sure policing and water and sewage are high on people's priority list. You may not think about the roads so much, and I get that they are important, but I think we do have to, as. Um Deputy Mayor said, we have to be very cautious about how, how much we're putting into some things when the scenario could change dramatically in fifteen years.
Counselor Cable, uh your hand is raised.
Thank you, worship. Um in the original report from Watson Associates, they talked about paying off the. Uh backlog to assets using a loan in year one, I'm just wondering if that is still the current thought.
I don't have all the details on that for them, I'm sorry, I was concentrating just on the levels of service here. Because we saved almost three million dollars on the backlog, I don't think there's gonna be a huge amount. From the backlog that needs to be borrowed, and if there would be, we will bring that to council's attention. It will be part of the twenty twenty six capital that we'd have to bring forward.
So when we look at the sixty years, is that gonna affect the water and sewer rates that we're charging? Whatever year out. Like, say it's year fifty, are we going to have to increase the water and sewer rates then to dig up the road? When we don't really need to? Like, is it gonna change that whole plan?
It's, it's possible. But what, what I, what I really wanna see from council is what level of service are you comfortable with for the PCI? So maybe you don't like alternative one or alternative two or the baseline, do you need something in between? Cause you're talking, the baseline is at sixty one. The alternative level is fifty two and the other level of alternative level two is at seventy seven. So what are you comfortable with? Cause I can guarantee you that the baseline scenario where they're asking us to mill and overlay, we're not doing that right now. So we, we could switch that baseline scenario to have an alternative level that. Every forty years, we're just replacing a mill and overlay and it makes that reduction down, but I don't know what that's going to do for the. The amount, it will probably put it down.
Counselor Cable, your, your hand is still raised.
Sorry, worship, I meant to put that down, but I would be in favor of the baseline for the roads.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Hawking, then Deputy Mayor.
Uh, thank you, your worship. I'm on table four, Christine, on page. One, ten. And I just wanna make sure I have this clear. So if we use a baseline. The rate is four point five three percent. If we go to uh Deputy Mayor. Deckard's suggestion, we say point one four percent. Or. Four doll, or three dollars and fifty, forty seven cents. I, I, I'm not a proponent of, just because other municipalities are, are in bad shape, we should go in bad shape. Um, I, I'm leaning, I, I support baseline minimum and I would be interested in looking at. Something, if you could come back with uh. Alternative two that even increases our baseline, because I, I, I think it's a. Short term pain for long term gain, not the other way around, so um. Uh my position, if I had to vote today, would be baseline, but I would prefer to see something else. Between baseline and alternative two. Um, down the road, you're going, we're gonna have other infrastructure costs. So just to base everything on what we have currently, I, I don't think is. Is looking down the road, so um tha- that's what, what I would like to see, thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, worship. We say we're not doing any of the milling and resurfacing at all now and we're getting. How many years are we getting out of our roads now? So if we actually start doing this. Like, my understanding is we're getting, what, sixty, seventy years out of our roads now? And that's without doing any maintenance, so if we do two. Eighty seems like a pretty easy target.
Do we do any maintenance at all, Ron? Like, I just, I just did a quick calculation based on what was provided here. If we only do a, a mill and overlay in year forty. And then don't do anything till year eighty, we do absolutely nothing. We will have a PCI rating of forty eight, which means that we have about twenty four percent of the time we're in good, very good, the rest of the time. We're not, so seventy six percent of the time you're in a poor or very poor or in a failed situation. Actually, in that situation, forty eight percent of the time you're failed. On the PCI levels, so I don't think you really wanna go there. We try and do as much as we can, I mean, we obviously we do. You do some paving occasionally when it's required.
We have done a, a mill, a mill and overlay, was that section of Second Street that we done in there? Between the county road and Fourteenth, Fourteenth Avenue leading in, into the industrial park. That was one which was used uh kind of significantly and. We did a mill and overlay in there, say, about five years ago, so it must have ran from um. I don't know, probably the late, late eighties in around to. Say, say about a twenty, twenty fifteen, so probably was in around the thirty, thirty year mark. I guess we also have ran into some situations where we have had to uh replace some of the roads. Entirely. Probably because we hadn't been doing some of the real rehabilitation alternatives, as mentioned, and uh. You know, they just ran their life expectancy probably earlier than what uh. Should have, should have taken place and we have some incidents of that, that have happened too, so. I think moving to get some. Proactive um. You know. Im- implementations in place probably could save us in some cases of some few roads that I've seen over the last few years. Where they've kinda ran their life expectancy uh sooner than what they should have.
Deputy Mayor?
I, I guess just for clarification, then. We have done some rehabilitation, but not much, so on a road that we didn't do any rehabilitation on, what, what are we getting out of that as far as like the service?
Some of that, I guess, in, in terms of when we moved into uh curb and gutter cross sections. Probably really didn't start that till in, into the nineties now, so we would have some roads where we've got in that. Thirty five or so year range now. I guess maybe. In terms of having to do some work, it maybe involves. Roads that catch more, more traffic, more, more consideration to this requirement uh. I probably look at, it'd be a county road, but Seventh Avenue project, maybe not much. Being done on a section there was reconstructed in ninety six and uh. Here we are hitting the thirty year mark on that one, but it's uh, you know, really kinda telling its tale on that and. Quite possibly, if there had have been a mill and pave done on that ten years ago, we wouldn't. See the degradation that we do on it now, so. I, I just kinda wonder on the roads that get um. More material type roads. They're probably in around the twenty or something needs to be, to be looked at.
Yeah, and I'm, that's why I guess I'm saying, you know, if, if we, on alternate one. We're saying we're going to start doing that, which we're not doing now, so. You know, are we going to be able to get eighty years out of alternate? One, when we're not doing anything now. To me, I think that's a reasonable target and again, I. I'm always a little concerned about a textbook answer that says, you know, they, they do a calculation, you know, your road's gonna wear out in thirty years. I think there's different circumstances and if we're not doing anything now and we're getting sixty, seventy years out of it. And we start doing something, eighty seems like a pretty, pretty reachable uh goal, so, thank you.
Chris?
I just wanted to say what we weren't doing is what the asset management plan said we should be doing, which was the crack ceiling, so we haven't been doing any of that. But Ron will do your resurfacing, that's part of your operations budget, which will go through a bunch of areas and do sections each year. So you're surface treating it each year under that, but it's not under capital. So what we're saying moving forward is let's move the micro surfacing to a capital and it becomes a, a broader area to be done with. We do that now every year, but it's in certain areas that currently aren't curb and gutter. Yeah, but what, what I was saying before is what we don't do is what with the asset management said we should be doing, which is the crack ceiling. We don't do any of that, we've never done that.
Okay, so, did we talk about facilities yet? Counselor Hawking?
Uh just for information, we do crack ceiling at the airport runway every year. And that has definitely increased the, the age of, of our. Of our runway and we spend close to twenty thousand dollars a year doing that, but it's a, it's part of our preventative maintenance program. And it has paid dividends.
So with facilities, we're looking at the fifty six hundred square feet, but not.
The fifty six hundred square feet through you, your worship, is included in the baseline for the levels of service for the buildings, facilities.
Okay, so. Someone decide, do you want, and we'll vote, do you want baseline, do you want alternate one or alternate two? Deputy Mayor?
I will propose that we do alternate one for the roads and baseline for the buildings.
Counselor Cable, you have a comment?
Thank you, worship. Um I believe the last time that we spoke about this, there was discussion about um refurbishment of our pavilions. Being part of this larger um facilities um option, is that? Is that true, or if we go and rebuild the pavilion over at the um baseball diamond in the future? That would then get dealt with in a future asset management plan?
Through you, your worship, that facility, the Binkley Patterson facility is already part of our base levels of service. So it's to replace current with current and we knew that the price was gonna be around eight hundred and twenty thousand. Based on some information that Laura had provided for us, so it's already included in that baseline. To upgrade the pavilion.
Counselor Hudson?
Thank you.
So was there not a plan to have storage in that particular facility?
Through you, your worship, I can answer that question, yes, there, there is um storage that is proposed in the new pavilion as, as well as. Fully accessible washroom. Um additional washrooms even and kitchenette and covered picnic area.
So was the storage to be able to enable some of your equipment to be put into that building?
There potentially will be some room for that, but that's not going to alleviate um the need. Further the, up at the public works building, if that's, yeah, okay. Through you, your worship, again, that eight hundred and twenty thousand that was provided for the pavilion was for the storage and everything, so that was. To say, let's replace our current one that's on our assets with this amount that we know it's gonna be eight hundred and twenty thousand approximately.
Sure. Anyone else? Okay, so it's been moved by um. Deputy Mayor Deckard, seconded by Counselor Hudson, that we go with alternate uh level of service one and baseline for the buildings. No? Okay. I'm gonna call the question, all in favor? Those opposed? And Counselor Cable, I'm gonna say you're opposed to that. Maybe? Cause he did comment on baseline. We don't know where he is. Right? Either way, um the motion carries. Whether Counselor Cable votes one way or the other, cause it was four, so, all right. You have what you need, Chris?
Yes, thank you, worship.
We will move on to eight point two and this is report HR zero three twenty five. The subject is updates to the electronic monitoring policy. It's from Melissa Hilgendorf, our human resources manager, and I need a mover and seconder to put this on the floor. Counselor Fleet and Counselor Sackle. Welcome, Melissa.
Thank you, your worship, just doing a quick check to make sure that you can hear me okay.
Yes, we can.
Perfect, thank you. So as the background information, in September twenty twenty two, council approved our electronic monitoring policy. Which is known as HR zero zero seven, to meet requirements that were introduced under the Employment Standards Act. Around disclosing electronic monitoring that occurs of employees. In general, um as was true back in twenty twenty two and remains true now. Is that we use electronic monitoring to maintain the security of our information and resources. To demonstrate compliance and to mitigate liability. And the information that we do monitor and that we keep is accessed just on an as needed basis, only by the people that need to see it. In order to maintain confidentiality and privacy of our staff, as well as others. Since the policy was first introduced, there have been some changes that we need to incorporate into an updated version of the policy. Such as monitoring that is completed at the new fire hall and um. Pardon me, including some provisions around electronic meetings. The proposed amendments are shown within your package um as. The proposed amendments are shown within your package as attached to this report with red text and strike through. There are no financial implications associated to this with this report. It supports strategic direction number five, open and responsible government. The recommendation is that report HR zero three twenty five, updates to HR zero zero seven electronic monitoring policy be received, and that council approve amendments to HR zero zero seven electronic monitoring policy as presented for implementation in the town's policy manual. I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Thank you, Melissa. Are there any questions for Melissa? Seeing none, I'll call the question, all in favor. That is carried. Thanks, Melissa. Eight point three is PW zero seven twenty five. The subject is the Hanover wastewater treatment plant upgrades tender. It's from Ron Cooper, our Director of Public Works, and I need a mover and seconder to put this on the floor. Counselor Hudson and Counselor Cable. Ron?
Thank you, worship. This report deals with the recent tender that we had put out for wastewater treatment plant. In interim upgrades, just to provide you with some background with respect to this project. We started an EA on the wastewater treatment plant. That was in October of of twenty twenty two. And that was to look at in increasing the plant capacity to allow for future growth of Hanover for the next thirty years. This actually interim project is kind of part of that to tie us through before we have to get involved with the big the big expansion at the wastewater treatment plant. There was a funding program that came available in April of last year, and it was Housing Enabling Water Systems Fund. We submitted an application and we were approved for these interim upgrades. And part of that was in relation to rerating the wastewater treatment plant capacity to accommodate increased flows and for new new developments. Part of this work that we have been involved in the rerating of the plant, we have been doing stress testing on the plant. Right now, we're working on we've got the majority of the flow going over to the west side of the plant, which is the newer portion. The portion that we're looking at doing the interim upgrades there would be the easterly portion of the plant. And our plan is to get these upgrades online, and then we would continue on with the stress testing to look at the east east side of the plant. Our overall goal in this stress testing that we've been doing at the wastewater plant is to increase the rating of the capacity from sixty three hundred and sixty cubic meters a day, which is our current ECA, to increase that to seven thousand cubic meters a day. That would give us mathematically, that would give us an additional six hundred and forty cubic meters a day, which, when we look at it in terms of units or lots that could be brought on board. Typically, they look at a number of around one cubic meter a day for housing units that are brought on. That is flow capacity. Another thing we're also looking at, and as part of the stress testing there, is on plant effluent strength, which is another component of doing this overall stress testing. I think the concern when we're going into this and looking through it is that we may be able to get the flow up to the seven thousand cubic meters a day. We still have the strength category to look at. So we may not be able to achieve that full additional six hundred and forty units when we're going through, but I would think the the interim upgrades are definitely going to get us some in that regard. We're looking at older equipment that needs needs to be replaced, and we're looking at some of the air aeration and treatment. We're looking at a newer technology in this. And that will actually increase on the east plant our aeration of the plant. So it's going to help us in the interim, pull us through, whether it pulls us through that entire capacity that we're hoping for. It's to be determined, but I'd say as we're kind of giving us the best shot we can to pull us through when we're getting close to capacity and do some upgrades there that are needed with some aging equipment. So in twenty twenty four, we had our consulting and associates. They put the detailed design together, specifications for tendering for the interim upgrades. We went out for tender plans and specifications for made available on February tenth. We had a tender closing date of March twelfth of this year. We had three tenders received, being from Wellington Construction Contractors, Inc. of Palmerston. We had another tender in from Stone House Construction Limited, Saint Mary's, and BGL Contractors Corporation of Waterloo. Had a review of the tenders that come in by our consulting engineer, Amy and Associates. They are recommending that we proceed with the low bidder on this, being Wellington Construction Contractors, Inc. That company has completed three previous upgrades to the wastewater plant, going back to twenty sixteen. Aeration tank, a different part of the east plant, we did some concrete repairs, and there were some round, two round clarifiers there that we upgraded some some mechanisms on then. The sledge storage facility twenty seventeen, that was completed via Wellington. As well as in twenty twenty, we had some clarifier upgrades and a dechlorination system that was required to meet affluent requirements at that time. What I will say is that all these were projects. There are previous projects involving implant processes and changes at the plant. And Wellington was very good to work cooperatively with our staff. This project that we're looking at is over an eight eight month period to have the work completed. So that would put it in into the fall of this year for completion. The financial applications, which I have shown on here, we have got a we're getting significant amount of provincial funding for the for the project in the amount of one million nine hundred sixty one dollars and eighty five cents. Looking at the amount of money which has been expended in the design to date, the Wellington tender contract value coming in. Our consultants are also saying due to potential of tariff impacts, so we had a twenty percent contingency allowance on that. There is their contract administration and testing that's going to be required when we go there through the construction phase. We are still going to be under budget on this project by approximately three hundred thousand of our grant application that we put in in twenty twenty four. And the funding from this is coming out of the water sewer sewer fees, which have been budgeted in twenty twenty five. The link to our strategic plan is safe and reliable infrastructure, as well as open and responsible government. And the recommendation is that report PW oh seven twenty five, Hanover wastewater treatment plant upgrades be received and that the project be awarded to Wellington Construction Contractors, Inc. for a total cost of one million six hundred and thirty four thousand plus HST. And that the mayor and clerk be authorized into a con contract with Wellington Contractors, Inc. for the Hanover wastewater treatment plant upgrades, and the project financing be as detailed in this report. That's my report on. If council would have any questions, I would be pleased to address them. Thank you.
Thanks, Ron. Are there comments or questions, discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question, all in favor. That is carried. Eight point four, we're on page fifty one of the package, is report PW zero eight twenty five. The subject is the drinking water quality management system annual update, and it's from Ron Cooper, our Director of Public Works, and I need a mover and seconder to put this on the floor. Deputy Mayor Dickert and Counselor Fleet. Ron?
Thank you, worship. Lengthy report you have in front of you, but I just would say on, it's annually, we bring this report to council. And it's a matter of it has a bunch of documents attached to it, and it provides you with the audits that have been have been completed throughout the last year in twenty twenty four. We've had a management review completed, and we had emergency training exercise completed. It's all part of our drinking water license license program. It requires an annual review of it. Last year, it was previously endorsed by council on April second, and we're coming through once again, again this year. I can just briefly pull you through the documents that have been provided, and I've just provided an update on where we stood on the audits that were done on it. We have an external audit that's done yearly. Last year was done on August fifteenth. That's done by an outside agency. Out of that, and when they do the audits, it's broken down into two kind of two components. If there is any non non conformances, that's addressed, which we had none. Then they get into another area, which is opportunities for improvement, and they only come up with one opportunities for improvement, and that had to do with documentation. And we do a management review. It's done every year, but on the actual form that we we provided, it actually didn't have a line on there that indicated when we're doing that actual review, it's from one date to another date. So we've incorporated that onto the form and it's we've been updating for quite a number of years and you know, there was just that one opportunity for improvement. We had an internal audit that was done October second and third. Actually, we had an outside person assist us with that, but when we went through that internal audit, there was actually four opportunities for improvement, and in terms of non compliance, there was none of them. The items there, one had to do with, they come up with an item there on on competencies, and what that one really kind of nailed down to is we've developed an Excel spreadsheet there to show the training and a thing to show when their licenses are reviewed. So it's kind of an internal document, and we've, you know, tracked one one more thing on it. It's an opportunity for improvement. We have a water main commissioning form, which we use when there's new water mains going in, whether it's from new development or whether it's from recon reconstruction projects that happen on an annual basis. And I think there was a part on there that we had to add on there about conforming to MEC requirements. It was minor, but we've updated the form as as per the recommendation. There was another one, element seventeen, which gets into instrumentation and calibration. We calibrate a number of pieces of equipment as required. I think what it did was there was one other piece piece of equipment, which we've actually added on to the list of the calibration and verifying that it's done annually. And then an element twenty one, which is continual improvements, that was in an internal document. We've kind of added when we have ministry inspection findings, which typically we're getting inspected every year from the ministry on the waterworks. If there's any comments come back from them as to requirements moving forward, we're incorporating that into this element twenty one of our continual improvements. That's an internal tracking document. Management review, which was completed in December seventeenth. That's provided for council's information, and every year we go through an emergency training exercise, and there was a debrief followed up for that, and that's documented as well. Went through the document, all twenty one elements with a fine tooth comb, and I can tell you that we have not had any through all of the changes in in twenty twenty four, they were all to internal spreadsheets that we had, so none of the elements of the twenty one elements required any any changes in in twenty twenty four. And there are no financial applications associated with this report. The link to the strategic plan, goal number one, safe and reliable infrastructure, and goal number five, open and responsible government. With the recommendation being that report PW eight twenty five, drinking water quality management system annual update be received. The council accept the external audit, internal audit, management review, training exercise completed in twenty four, and the council approves and endorses the updated operational plan. So checks and balances, all our documents are here. If I don't have proof that I provided them on an annual basis, I won't be compliant with one of the audits that come through in twenty twenty five. So all checked, all balances, and all good. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thanks, Ron. A gold star. Counselor Sackle?
Thank you, worship, and thank you, Ron, for your report. So I suppose this is my third time going through your annual report, Ron, but it's so important. And there's so much information, and I so appreciate the time and effort that your team puts into this, the training that you have to do and the reports. It's a relief to know that your your collective agreement states that during the life of this agreement, there will be no strikes, picketing, or stoppage of work and no lockouts. I can imagine the chaos that would ensue if that happened. So thank you for the detail. Thank you for all of the work you guys put in, especially with the cautionary boil water advisory that we dealt with last year. All of these things make this document so important. So thank you to you. Thank you to Ted, and thank you to your team.
Counselor Hudson?
Thank you, worship. Ron, I'm just wondering if you can speak to the the fact that you've put both well replacements on the five year budget forecast. I'm on page one forty four, I believe. So when you're saying replacement, can you just explain for me a little bit more about what that would entail?
Could you give me what page it is of the council package? Top right hand corner. Top right-hand corner. Yeah, I got it. Yeah, okay. Could you just run that question by me again?
Sure.
So it's just stating here that for the five-year budget forecast, you've put both wells as being replaced, one in two thousand and twenty-six for well two and well one in two thousand and twenty-seven. So I'm not sure what that means replaced, if it's a different spot or refurbished or what that actually means.
I would say it's more of a refurbishment. This year on, on well number two, we're actually going to go back in there this year and do a further inspection of it. Just to confirm what was provided in the, in the previous, previous report, so. We're getting the wells, we're getting them looked at every, every five years. And I think on the one well that we had, there was some issue regarding the casing condition. And they had suggested within another five years, we might have to look at drilling in the same location, another offset well beside it. But we're going to have that further review just to see what changes there have been in the casing to confirm what, what sort of remediation work is going to be required.
So it's not an actual finding another source, right?
No, in any case, it's not finding another source. If we find the casing and is beyond doing any repair rehabilitation, we may have to put another well in on the same site, out of the same aquifer adjacent to it. But before we dwell into that wholeheartedly, we're going to have another look at it this year prior to it. Confirming what are, exacting our budget for coming up in two thousand and twenty-six.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Dickert.
Thank you, worship, and I just want to say, you know, thanks and acknowledge the great job that you and the, the team have done there to have no noncompliances, I think is impressive. And the other part that I think is worth mentioning is when you do an internal audit and you find opportunities for improvement, and you implement them, and the external audit hasn't found, or has only found one versus the four. So you found, I think that, that speaks volumes for what our staff are doing out there and, and looking at what they do and making sure they're the best of the best. So thank you.
Okay, all in favor of PW zero eight twenty-five? That is carried. Item eight point five is P R C zero four two thousand and twenty-five. The subject is the outdoor ice rink. It's from Laura Kristin, our Director of Parks, Recreation and Culture. And I need a mover and second to put this on the floor, Counselor Sackel and Counselor Cable. Laura.
Thank you, worship. So just to give you a little bit of background, at the February seventh council meeting in two thousand and twenty-two, council approved a notice of motion that directed staff to investigate the feasibility of building and maintaining an outdoor ice rink. Following that notice of motion, staff were successful in securing some funding for the outdoor rink from the Tourism Relief Fund, which is through Fed Dev Ontario, to fund the purchase of a dashboard system, liners and netting for the rink as well. The netting is located at the ends of the rink to minimize those pucks that are, are leaving the surface during those hockey days. So despite Mother Nature, since two thousand and twenty-two, unseasonably warm temperatures for the, the two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-three, twenty-four seasons, we, we really didn't open the outdoor rink as planned. But this past season, the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five season, however, was a major success with the rink operating for forty-nine days. Our outdoor rink has been a very vital community project. It brings families and individuals together for a fun and a free activity to participate in during the winter season. The outdoor rink has been a collaboration between the P R C department as well as a dedicated group of volunteers. P R C staff are responsible for building the rink, while the volunteers are essential for regular flooding, shoveling, and the general upkeep. It's estimated that P R C staff contribute approximately fifty hours towards the rink. That includes building, taking down, as well as our, our weekly maintenance that's required. And is estimated that volunteers contributed approximately a hundred and seventy-five hours to the ongoing maintenance tasks, which can fluctuate depending on the snowfall levels that we experience. We would like to express our sincere gratitude to the following dedicated volunteers. Their support made this possible, and we could not have achieved this without them. So I'm going to take a moment and I'm going to read everybody's name out, please. In no particular order. Matt Bender, Sean Louvrink, Brad Schultz, Steve White, Lisa Colen, Nico Mas, Doug Spear, Derek Widmeyer, Chris Coke, Sean Prentis, and Sam Teedman. Thank you very much to each and every one of you if you're watching today. Following the tremendous success of, of this past season, marked by high community turnout and significant use on our rink, we have experienced some wear and tear on the equipment and the infrastructure. To ensure that the rink remains operative, operating for the upcoming season, we are seeking an additional thirty-five hundred dollars to cover necessary repairs and replacement parts for the rink. The thirty-five hundred dollars would be used to purchase two new additional rink liners, some arena board connectors that have been cracked, some foam bumpers also that experience some wear and tear, and some additional maintenance equipment. These items are needed to maintain the rink's functionality and the safety. So financial implications, so the current budget allocates fifteen hundred dollars in two thousand and twenty-five towards the outdoor rink. So that includes porta potty and signage and some replacement parts such as shovels and hoses. So the additional thirty-five hundred dollars that's requested, we are proposing that we could cover this from projected savings that we've realized in the P R C's capital budget. The hydraulic trailer purchase that is, is currently, we've, we've actually just recently issued a P O for, we're going to experience some savings there. So we would like to reallocate this, those dollars in order to, to fund the outdoor rink project. I will note that with this additional wear and tear, it is expected, we probably should, would, should project that annually for that five thousand dollars in order to maintain the rink moving forward. So this report is to seek council's support to reallocate the funds as detailed and proceed with the necessary purchase to enable the rink setup this fall. Because we would be doing that, the setup in the fall of two thousand and twenty-five. So we wouldn't have an opportunity to, to bring that forward in the two thousand and twenty-six budget. The link to strategic plan is goal one, safe and reliable infrastructure, as well as goal two, healthy and welcoming community. And the recommendation before you this evening is that report P R C zero four two thousand and twenty-five outdoor rink be received, and that council support the reallocation of the additional thirty-five hundred dollars required from the savings in the two thousand and twenty-five capital budget as detailed to support the continuation of the outdoor rink project for next, for the two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-six season.
Thanks, Laura. Any comments or questions? I think we can all say that we are very appreciative of the volunteers because without them, it would not happen. Counselor Sackel.
Thank you, worship. Exactly. It's so difficult to get volunteers now and to be able to have eleven individuals that helped out on this ice rink. That's pretty amazing. So I, I agree with your remarks, Mayor Sue. And I would like to say that I'd like to support that five thousand dollars for next year's budget.
Counselor Fleet.
Thank you, worship, and thank you, Laura, for that report. I support the relocation of the thirty-five hundred. You know, the outdoor rink forty-nine days, wow, you know, and we can't control Mother Nature. And, you know, it was well received by our community. And also thanks to all the volunteers and staff. I'll tell you, where would our community be without volunteers? Well done. So thank you.
Okay, I'll call the question. Oh, Counselor Hudson, go ahead.
Thank you, worship, and thank you, Laura. And one, one great year out of three, we did good this year. So in just looking at the background of this from February seventh, two thousand and twenty-two, part of it was to identify community groups to provide ongoing financial assistance. So have we tried to do that? Because that was part of the original mandate on this. And because you're being able to shift your thirty-five hundred dollars this year, that doesn't necessarily mean you will next year. And so it's going to be an ongoing five thousand to perpetuity or people's skates fall off. So can we check with some of the community groups to see if they would consider the thirty-five hundred dollars and/or a different community group every year? Is that a, is that a possibility?
Through you, worship, we, we certainly can reach out to our, our service groups. With, with the notice of motion in two thousand and twenty-two, the grant kind of provided, it, it sort of bridged that gap at the time. Have I approached a service group for this upcoming season? No, I have not.
Okay. All in favor of P R C zero four two thousand and twenty-five? That is carried. Item nine is correspondence requiring action. We do not have any. Item ten, reports and correspondence for information. Ten point one, this is report P R C zero three two thousand and twenty-five. The subject is Earth Day in Hanover, and it's from Laura Kristin, our Director of Parks, Recreation and Culture. Laura.
Thank you again, your worship. So Earth Day, just around the corner, everybody. It is celebrated annually on April the twenty-second. And the town has, has been organizing events in response to a notice of motion that was brought forward from council with the goal of raising awareness and promoting environmental sustainability. The event certainly reflects the intent of that notice of motion, which calls for the town to officially recognize Earth Day and encourage our residents and businesses to take part in other activities that preserves or enhances our natural surroundings. So this year, Earth Day two thousand and twenty-five, we have a variety of events and activities that have been organized. A couple new options and a couple of old favorites mixed in there as well. So first is the Zero Waste Challenge. And this is, you know, we, we invite residents to, to join us in, in reducing their, their carbon footprint by embracing those, those three principles, reduce, reuse, and recycle. We encourage everyone to just by making small changes, such as turning off water while brushing your teeth, teeth, or avoiding single-use plastics, or opting for water, reusable water bottles, we can truly all make a difference. So we certainly encourage everyone to, to take part in that on April twenty-second. We also will be having our Tidy Town Challenge. So this will be a targeted litter pickup, and it will be organized to clean up various locations around Hanover Parks neighborhoods and sections of our community trail. Volunteers are being asked to meet at the P and H Center at six thirty P M on Earth Day for instruction supplies, and then at that point, staff will assign a, a location for you to clean. Food and refreshments will be provided by our sponsor, Holman Motors. And we certainly want to thank our, our volunteers in advance. And if you have any questions about that, please reach out to P R C staff. We also have a engaging our local schools with our student cleanup and recycled art contest. So the local schools are encouraged, have been encouraged, and, and will be hopefully all participating to celebrate Earth Day and cleaning up their schoolyards and the surrounding areas. Students have also been challenged to create an art piece using only recycled items. And we are offering this as a contest as well. So entrants are invited to submit online, and we'll be entered into a random draw for prizes also donated by our sponsor, sponsor Holman Motors. The submission deadline for that is April the twenty-second. New this year, we have clay pot painting. And this is a way to celebrate Earth Day by painting a clay pot. And this is going to be held at the P and H Center at seven P M in the Lion's Den. And it's going to be led by local artists, and participants will decorate their own clay pot. And that'll, that pot will be suitable for, for plants of, of a, a different variety. And you can bring that home and enjoy it. So the space is limited in that. We do encourage you to pre-register, and that can be available at our website. And finally, we have our popular community-wide garage sale. This is going to be held on the Saturday. So the other events are taking place on Earth Day itself. This will be held on the Saturday following April the twenty-sixth. It is rain or shine, and it's from eight A M till noon. And we encourage residents to participate in our community-wide garage sale. You have to complete an application form by Monday, April the twenty-first in order to have your location added to the community yard sale map. And that map will be available for residents to download on the town's website. So you can check out all of the wonderful places to find your treasures. Financial implications, the staff time and incidental expenses are covered through the P R C budget. The clay pot painting and supplies are covered through the Economic Development Budget as a sponsorship from the Cultural Roundtable, as well as event prizes and supplies, such as the garbage bags and gloves. And the volunteer appreciation, food and beverage is covered by our generous sponsor, Holman Motors. The link to strategic plan is goal two, healthy and welcoming community. And the recommendation before you this evening is that report P R C zero three two-five Earth Day in Hanover be received for council's information.
Thanks, Laura. Any comments, questions? Counselor Fleet.
Thank you, worship. Thank you, Laura. I've got my team in place. All of council, we're going to challenge mayor and deputy mayor in the cleanup. So I'm sure, you know, council will win again, but we're going to challenge, the challenge is out there. So we're ready to go.
Hey, I didn't even get asked. I got kicked off the team. I guess. Okay, we'll see. Okay, ten point two is the two thousand and twenty-four Annual Health and Safety Report. And Melissa Hilgendorf, our Human Resources Manager, is going to highlight it. Melissa?
Thank you, your worship. So I'm pleased to be here tonight presenting our two thousand and twenty-four Annual Health and Safety Report. I think this is our fifth report. So it seems to be a good tradition. I think it's a really great tool to make sure that everyone throughout the organization is informed on what's going on with our Health and Safety Committee and health and safety overall. So I won't go into too much detail, as I know that you already have reviewed the report in your package. But do you want to provide a general overview and highlight some key items? Our health and safety, our Joint Health and Safety Committee is comprised of various staff from numerous departments, and they work really hard to support the health and safety of over, or of all staff within the town. They work, they hold regular meetings quarterly, but they do meet more frequently as required to review and address items or concerns that may come up. They do spend quite a bit of time doing that, you know, preparing for meetings, as you can imagine, and coming ready to keep pushing things forward. And they have been doing a great job with that. The Health and Safety Work Plan for two thousand and twenty-four is what the Health and Safety Committee creates to help guide their work activities for the year. So these are goals that are identified by the committee and council. So these are goals that are identified by the committee and council approves them. And then they're made available to all staff to help ensure that everyone is aware of what's going on and to keep the internal responsibility system in place and accountable. The committee worked really hard to achieve their objectives set for twenty twenty-four. And you can review the status of those objectives on page four of the report. Or I believe it's page two twenty-three of your agenda package. When it comes to monthly health and safety inspections, each department does aim to complete inspections for their areas every single month. Members of the Health and Safety Committee then take turns assisting in those inspections to help provide some insight and guidance around the process. A total of one hundred and sixty-three inspections were completed in twenty twenty-four. And this equals about eighty-nine percent of possible circumstances. There are some times where inspections cannot be completed due to other demands. However, we, even at the ninety-eight, or eighty-nine percent, pardon me, we are well above the legislated inspection requirements, which is great news. Eighteen percent of our inspections identified corrective actions, which is very similar to prior years. So this is a low rate of infractions, which is good, tells us that things are going well. But the fact that we're still identifying things is also good to show that there's an ongoing effort to be mindful and to create a safer work environment and minimize hazards. Analysis of the inspection reports didn't identify any specific trends. And corrective actions were generally minor in nature and were completed on the same day as the inspection in over half of circumstances. When it comes to incidents and accidents throughout twenty twenty-four, we did receive through the Health and Safety Committee twenty-four incident reports. This is an increase over last year, which was fifteen incidents in twenty twenty-three. So these can be incidents that are experienced by town staff, which sometimes includes interactions with patrons or members of the public. But it always involves staff directly. There is a graph on page six of the report or page two twenty-five of the agenda package that provides a breakdown of the type of incidents reported. An analysis of the incident reports did show that rushing was a key factor and a cause for many of the incidents. So that's just people moving too quickly and maybe not paying attention to the things as they normally would. So in response, the Health and Safety Committee provided supervisors with educational resources and requested that a safety talk be held at departmental meetings around the topic. Outside of those incident reports, we did make one report to the Ministry of Labor related to the passing of a fire department member due to occupational illness. And that's in accordance with the legislated reporting requirements. As for health and safety policies, procedures, and guidelines, I'm sure many of you have seen updated policies come through for, for your review. And so we do have a schedule in place through the Health and Safety Committee to help ensure that we stay on top of regular review of all of those policies, procedures, documents, and guidelines. So throughout twenty twenty-four, the committee adhered to their schedule and they actioned fourteen documents. That often involves lots of meetings and research and consultation. And then we also do send out new and updated health and safety documents to applicable staff and others for their review and sign off. On page eight of the annual report or two twenty-seven of your agenda package, there is a summary of the key health and safety training completed in twenty twenty-four. This does not include policy and procedure review. There is a lot of that, but that's not included in this table. But a significant effort is made to monitor trainings and to ensure that timely recertifications happen, that follow-up happens. So we can ensure that we are compliant and that we have the right documentation in place. We also hosted our second annual townwide staff development day in September of twenty twenty-four, and that also supports our overall staff wellness. So overall, then in conclusion, I think an excellent effort was made to continue upholding the duties and goals of the Joint Health and Safety Committee throughout twenty twenty-four. And I would like to extend appreciation to that committee for all of their ongoing commitment to health and safety, as well as council's support of the committee's initiatives. And I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Thank you, Melissa. Any comments or questions? Deputy Mayor Dickert.
Thank you, Your Worship, and thank you for the report, Melissa. Great to see the quick resolution on the items that they do find and how quickly they're getting taken care of. I was just wondering if you could expand a bit on the twenty-four versus fifteen incidents over the, the year and that it's rushing that is attributing, the attributing factor, contributing factor. And what area did they fall in? Was it in driving or? I'm guessing, just looking at the numbers on the graph, it must have been driving slips and trips or cuts and scrapes. And my second question is, do we have a safety recognition program? And I know there's a train of thought out there that when you have a safety recognition program, it sometimes drives under reporting, people won't report because of the program. But I just wondered what, what we do here in the town.
Thank you through you, Your Worship. I could say that the rushing spans across all different types of incidents. Someone may cut and scratch themselves because they were walking too quickly and they hit their hand against something. Or they were going too quickly across the pool deck and they fell and scraped their knee. Some of those are driving. But generally, it's interesting the way our incident reports are structured, that they force people to take a look at what happened, the root cause of that, and then what can be done differently. And we could just really tell that a lot of them were saying, you know, slow down, take more time, pay attention to my surroundings, be aware. So, I mean, it's good that people are identifying it themselves, but we also felt necessary to kind of push that along a little bit further. And otherwise, when it comes to recognition, the Health and Safety Committee has talked different times about a recognition type of program. But like you mentioned, they don't want to discourage people from actioning anything that is unsafe or kind of sweeping it under the rug. So what they have done is implemented discussion at their quarterly meetings to do health and safety shout-outs, to really try to recognize those excellent efforts. And then we, we issue that out through staff newsletter.
Very good. Any other comments? Counselor Cable.
Thank you, Your Worship, and thank you, Melissa, for the report. On page twenty-seven of our package, it's eight of nine of the report. You notice the amount of time supervisors and the Health and Safety Committee members are spending to ensure that people have reviewed the documents that you've provided and to collect all the sign-offs accordingly. Could you just expand a little bit about the learning management module that you're investigating?
Yes, of course. Thank you, Counselor Cable. So we have, we are in progress with the implementation of a day force learning module. We were in, on good track with that. It would be very helpful. We were recently just advised that they are migrating to a new version. So we need to go through another couple months-long process to migrate to new version before we can actually finalize setup and roll out. But I am very much looking forward to that. And I think a number of our staff and supervisors are as well.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Melissa. If you want to just continue on with ten point three, which is the Gray County Joint Municipal Accessibility Advisory Committee.
Sure. Thank you. So the Gray County Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee did meet virtually February twelfth. Catherine Schultz was re-elected as the chair, and the committee welcomed Scott Gregg as the new council representative. The election of the co-chair was deferred to the next meeting, just to allow more, more members to participate in that vote. The committee reviewed and provided comments on various projects, including the Gray Highlands Accessibility Progress Report, upgrades to a hall in Gray Highlands, and renovation projects happening at the Durham Community Centre in West Gray. They also looked at some wording for a section that is being put in the Gray Roots Museum with some member input there. It was a relatively quick meeting. After that, the next meeting was set for May fifteenth, followed by adjournment.
Thanks, Melissa. I don't see any hands raised. So we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is ten point four. This is page two hundred and thirty-three of our package. And it is the Hanover Police Service Board Meeting Minutes from March the seventeenth. And I will highlight those. Selwyn Hicks was elected chair. And Peter McEwen was elected vice chair. Succession planning for the positions of chief and deputy chief is ongoing. A part-time constable has been hired and a special constable has been moved from part-time to full-time. And provincial appointments to the board, to any boards, police boards, are expected to resume very soon, as these appointments were on hold during the election. And until members of parliament are sworn in, they are not doing any appointments. And we do have one member who is waiting on reappointment. So open to any questions, if anyone has any. Okay, ten point five is the library, Hanover Public Library Minutes from January fifteenth and February nineteenth. And I will highlight both of those under one update. Brenda Booth was elected chair and Jeanette Wilkin was elected vice chair. A grant has been submitted to Young Canada Works for a summer student position. Trustees or board members continue to review the board work plan at each meeting to ensure objectives are being met. And at the January meeting, a virtual meeting was held with Ontario Library Services to understand the process to gain accreditation. And technology and equipment upgrades are being reviewed to align with the strategic plan. And open to any questions? Seeing none. We'll move on to ten point six, which is the Downtown Improvement Area Meeting Minutes. Counselor Fleet.
Thank you, Worship. The DIA met on Thursday, February twentieth. I'll just go over some of the highlights. Mayor Sue and Sherry, our CEO, Sherry Walden and April Marshall joined the DI table discuss discussion revolved around the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-seven strat plan, noting community and business involvement to form an action plan. Downtown Hanover is noted as a priority, knowing the DIA mandates are to promote and improve our downtown. Assistance from the DI include a portion of the consultant fees plus two reps as a working group to assist in creating the plan. Another group of reps will work on implementation. Also discussed were parking supply enforcement, schedule events, further updates were received. Music in the Square, Volunteers are valued event. After discussion, the DIA approved the funds for the downtown improvement project. Committee updates, I give a council report, Jen give an ETC DAC report. Linda Filler give a market committee report. Then other businesses, Valenda, a promotion, springtime shop and win, Mother's Day. And new Canadian flags have been ordered. And that's all I got to report from the DIA. I take any questions?
Thank you. Sherry, comment?
I just want to note that it is listed in the DIA minutes under the Economic Tourism Culture Development Advisory Committee, the April twenty-sixth Fire Hall Grand Opening. That date did change after this meeting due to a conflict that arose. So that date is now Saturday, May tenth. So that date is, it was accurate at the time of the DIA meeting, but has since changed.
Thank you. Item ten point seven is the Soggy Mobility and Regional Transit Meeting Minutes. Deputy Mayor Dickert.
Thank you, Your Worship. Highlights of that meeting, of that meeting, rather, Aaron Eldersley, Deputy Mayor Jen Shaw was elected as vice chair for SMARTS. Discussions are ongoing with King Cardon on possible service level enhancements for their municipality. We approved the cost of living wage adjustment for staff. And total rise for January, we're one thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight, down from two thousand forty-nine a year ago. And for Hanover specific, we had four hundred and seventy in twenty twenty-five versus five eighty-four in twenty twenty-four. And we are attributing that to the inclement weather and road closures that were experienced through that time, but resulting in that decline. Any questions? I'd be glad to have, glad to answer.
Thank you. Okay, I don't see any hands. Ten point eight, this is correspondence from Gray County Clerk's Department. Gray County is requesting any interested municipality to indicate its support in principle for a hybrid planning service delivery model. And just to note, municipalities will not be committing to participation. They will be given the opportunity later in the process to opt in or opt out following the detailed financial investigations and the development of draft MOUs. So I need to ask, are this council in favor of investigating this? Or Sherry, you want to start?
Just counsel, it was staff's plan to bring back a staff report to our next meeting on April twenty-second in regards to this. Again, just to provide some further information from a staff point of view with respect to this request from Gray County. So if that's, if that's okay, I would suggest that we defer making that decision until you see that staff report on April twenty-second.
Sounds like a plan. And we do have until May ninth. So we're, okay. All right, we'll wait, wait for that report. Item ten point nine is Gray County Council and Committee of the Whole highlights. Deputy Mayor Dickert.
Thank you, Your Worship. We have the opportunity to celebrate six recipients of the exemplary service medals. The awards received from the Governor General recognize experienced paramedics who consistently perform at an exceptional level. And we are fortunate to have six people receiving that this time around. Gray County has once again been named to the Top Twenty-One Intelligent Communities of the Year by the Intelligent Communities Forum. The forum is a global network of cities and regions, and its mission is to help communities use information and communication technologies to create inclusive prosperity, tackle social and governance challenges, and enrich their quality of life. Council supported forming a committee to examine opportunities for joint municipal services. The purpose of that committee will be to look for ways to collaborate to deliver services better across the county. And council accepted the minutes of the Community Services Committee meeting, which included public health delegation about the need to modernize the smoke-free municipal space bylaw, so it includes vaping. And we also received an update on the Fourteenth Street Supportive Housing Program and the success there. There are twelve units in that facility, and they've had eight graduates already that have gone through there and are now out in the community on their own and being very successful. That community has also become a community of its own, and, and the group of people living there actually hosted Halloween and had resident, or pardon me, area children coming through there, getting their treats. And a really positive note from that is there has been little to no concerns from the area residents of having that facility in their neighborhood. So I think that's a really good news story. We received the twenty twenty-four Paramedic Response Times Report, and paramedic services met or exceeded all prescribed response time targets during twenty twenty-four. And Warden Matrasovs read a statement announcing Gray County CIO Kim Wingrove will be stepping down on April, on May second. And Deputy CIO Randy Schertzr has been appointed to fill that role when that time comes.
Very good. All right, ten point one zero is the Community Safety and Well-Being Planning Minutes. Counselor Sackel, if you would highlight those, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. The committee met on February the twenty-fifth. And Lindsay Johnson, who's the Director of the Gray Bruce, Ontario Health Team Planning Committee, provided an overview from the, the committee on the access and attachment to team-based primary care. Their mission is to optimize healthcare, to optimize care experience for patients and providers, and to have better population health outcomes. The role of the team is to collaborate with community partners to implement Ontario Health's priorities in alignment with the Ministry of Health. And Lindsay Johnson pointed out that there are twenty thousand to thirty thousand Gray Bruce residents who do not have a primary care provider. That's a little shocking. Alexis Cook spoke next as an update advising of the plan to review the CSWBP by July of twenty twenty-five to ensure a four-year requirement is met. A student placement has occurred through Georgian College, which began on March the tenth to help with the STAR program. An additional STAR training is being coordinated, including a development of a resource document to increase the An additional STAR training is being coordinated, including a development of a resource document to increase the general public's understanding of what it is. And on June the seventh, the committee and partners will be hosting the Children's Health Day event to increase youth and parents' caregivers' knowledge of mental and physical health resources within the community, as well as increased share ideas to keep healthy both physically and mentally. Alexis Cook updated the acutely elevated risk situation table, which is STAR. And in twenty twenty four, there were twenty three situations. And currently in twenty twenty five, there are six situations. One has been closed and one has had their acutely elevated risk lowered. So that's a really good thing. Action Table Updates. While STAR is organized into five areas, number one is mental health. So Bright Shores Wellness and Recovery Centre and Fourteenth Street Transitional Supportive Housing Programs are well underway. The next steps include a revision of the Gray Bruce Mental Health and Addiction Terms of Reference. And number two is crime prevention. Work continues for collaboration with all licensed dispensaries in Gray Bruce and Soggy First Nation to provide educational resources for those purchasing cannabis in stores. The goal of the action table is to increase awareness of the risks of driving impaired by cannabis, as well as to reduce the number of individuals who are driving impaired by cannabis in Gray and Bruce Counties. So there are five events planned as a result of that throughout April. And it's going to be about providing education and awareness. I'll speak to that at the end of the report with regard to Hanover. Short term rental initiative has been completed with a resource developed for information and on awareness and prevention of human trafficking. It's recommended that all municipalities adopt a document into their short term rental licensing process. Number three is poverty and income. Jill Umbach provided a status report for the Poverty and Income Action Group, including updates on the Community Volunteer Income Tax Program. For anyone wishing to access that income tax program, you call two one one to find out where the nearest free clinic is to get assistance with doing your income tax. New partnership to refresh the Health Equity Action Group and continued promotion of the living wage. Number four is housing and homelessness. The Steering Committee is working on a document to identify the real cost of homelessness, which will allow better understanding of levels of transitional housing needed in Gray and Bruce. The Steering Committee members are also working on a consistent encampment referral process, as well as improvements to the by name list referral form. And lastly, number five is addictions and substance abuse. Two funding applications have been submitted to support a dedicated coordinator position, as well as relaunching of the Peer Advisory Committee. Under Funding Updates, Alexis advised that full time permanent funding has been secured for the coordinator position from Gray and Bruce Counties. Under the Index of Wellbeing Survey, they're looking for partners to help support with the development of Community Safety Wellbeing and Planning Index of Wellbeing Survey for a January twenty twenty six launch to assist with future planning. And under Municipal Rep, John Farmer, there's a proposal to start the Municipal Rep Community of Practice to share our best resources, data, lessons, et cetera, with our municipalities as they relate to the community safety wellbeing planning. The proposal currently includes a meeting one time a month for one hour and having a share point to share resources easily. I'd like to point out that I have submitted my name to work with John Farmer on this initiative. And under Local Updates, Bruce County has a new homelessness resource guide that are, that's available for partners. And on a final note, there's been a recent date change for that drug trafficking town hall event featuring police and health experts. It's been moved from the Monday to the Tuesday, April the twenty ninth from six to eight P M. at the P and H Center. So please, those in the listening public, if this is an opportunity for you to access education and awareness on drug trafficking and substance use, harm reduction and addictions. Thank you. If there's any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Thank you, Counselor Sackle. Any questions, comments? Counselor Hudson?
The only question I had was that the Bruce Gray Poverty Task Force, when do they, when do they meet? I've tried to find some of that information.
I'm not on that committee, Counselor Hudson, so I don't know. We'd have to contact Jill Umbach, who's the head of that committee to find out. If you, I could look it up, or I could, Jill Umbach, U M B A C H. Thank you.
So that leads into the next one, ten point one one, which is the Bruce Gray Poverty Task Force Annual Report, which is an action table of the community safety and wellbeing strategy. That is page three hundred and eighty three. And Jill Umbach's contact information is at the bottom of that letter. Right. Okay, we'll move on. Ten point one two is a good news media release from Soggy Conservation, letting everyone know that RBC Foundation has given them ten thousand dollars for to advance flood and drought forecasting, which is very nice of them. Item ten point one three is a letter of introduction of our MPP for Bruce Gray Own Sound, Paul Vickers. And item eleven is planning and other meetings. And they are listed on this agenda and on our website. Dates to Remember and Announcements. The next committee of the whole meeting is May fifth at four P M. Next regular council meeting is April twenty second, four P M. Special Council Meeting, which is our official plan review, which is April eighth tomorrow at four P M. And Community Connects, where we're inviting people, residents, anyone to come out and get to connect with council and staff. And that is April ninth at five P M. And it's going to be held in the Soggy Room here in this building. And at this point, I'll ask, are there any notices of motion? Seeing none, we do not have a closed meeting, so I need a mover and seconder to adjourn at six eighteen. Counselor Hawking and Counselor Sackle, all in favor? That's carried. Thank you.